Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, paragraph 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people they may gather in one place, this meeting of the Open Space Committee of the Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No one person attendance members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to participate in the meeting via Zoom can do so by going to this link. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 848-4506-1827, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment. By following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad or using the raised hand function on Zoom. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real time access, we will post a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. You restored over business?
Mr. Chairman, we do have some minutes if you had a chance to look at them from March.
I did, but I think there's a couple of corrections. Can you put the March minutes up?
Sure.
It's not going to work for me. Hang on. I had this all figured out and now I'm lost. What is it gonna do?
Well, scroll through a little bit. There's a couple of typos in there. There's a couple of things that just needed to be corrected, I saw.
Okay.
If you get to the body of the meeting.
Oh. There's architecturals right here. Actually, that may be right.
I just added the yes, that's right.
Yeah, just it doesn't like it, that's all. Want me to keep going?
No, so hang on a sec.
I didn't print them out.
Oh, storage, is something wrong here, I think. M. Sartino asked about snow storage because it's limited, the location, and I'm sorry to ask about the architecturals which you already noted because most. Yeah, keep going.
Well, the one I noticed anyway, if you want me to jump in, Mike.
Go ahead.
Was where it talks about Attorney Silverstein, and then it calls him later Attorney Silverfine. I'm not sure which is.
They're two different attorneys that were there.
Okay, there you go. I stand corrected.
One was the insurance attorney that was there. Was it, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our insurance attorney was Silverfine and our town council was Silverstein.
Maybe you didn't notice the other attorney because he just sat quietly.
Yeah. It was no help to us, in my opinion.
Guess I should have highlighted them.
It was somewhere in 362, Mike?
Um, I keep going. Slide down, Belle.
Mm-hmm.
Eight pages, I'm on page 13.
M. Sartino said when the project met zoning when it was submitted, it was a lawsuit and it changed.
So you said that, you said that when that, the project met zoning when it was submitted, there was a lawsuit and it changed, now it's back as reasonable accommodation?
Town created a special town meeting to specially block the possible land, you said they were. Gotta get down some more. M. Sartino said when the project met zoning when it was submitted, it was a lawsuit and it changed.
So you said that, you said that when that, the project met zoning when it was submitted, there was a lawsuit and it changed, now it's back as reasonable accommodation?
Town created a special town meeting to specially block the possible land, you said they were. Gotta get down some more. All right, yeah, the board could consider adding a prior to endorsement condition that plan should be revised to move the proposed territory along the front entrance to the ramp. That's okay. I think it's okay. Yeah, the other stuff was all right. I think the minutes are good as submitted. There was a couple of corrections of spelling. Take a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second. Third.
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Want to do the May minutes too?
This isn't just March and April.
Yeah.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry. April minutes?
There's nothing to them, really.
Yeah, April's easy, but.
We need a meeting, did we?
It was just meeting enough to continue everything. So here, I'll share on my screen.
Take a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman's yes. So, did we have a 7:30 for Nichols?
You did, but they asked to continue to the November meeting.
To the what meeting?
November.
Oh.
We vote on that?
Yes, please. We have, we could do a 7:30 or a.
Will she be ready for the November or should we go to December?
I don't know, they haven't, they haven't said. But the more, you know, the more time this goes on for it, the harder it is to keep it in our brains.
So 7:30 on November?
10th. November 10th. 7:30 works.
Okay, take a motion to continue the public. Do we have to extend the action deadline?
Oh, we get a special permit, and that's what's really hard about the special permits, because we have to keep track of, you know, who's there all the time.
Okay. Take a motion to extend the public hearing to November 10 at 7:30.
So moved.
Second.
Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
Okay.
So the Form A wasn't ready?
No, wasn't ready. You'll see that at the November meeting.
We don't have to pass on that or anything, that was.
I didn't put it on the agenda, so it's okay.
Yeah, the agenda that we posted, it wasn't on that agenda.
Okay. You want to do the Board of Appeals next?
Sure.
Got to get the file open here, I thought I had it open.
Sarah, I can pull it up if you want to start talking, I'll pull it up.
Oh, sure. All right, so it's 15 Winston Ave. They're looking for a variance, they're a corner lot, they're off of the cul-de-sac of Winston Ave, and they also have frontage on MOA. They're proposing a 16 by 24 above ground pool, and it would meet setback requirements except the front setback. They're proposing 30 feet where 40 is required along MOA. The applicant described their hardship as having a corner lot and wetlands. Being a corner lot results in two frontages with larger setbacks than a side or rear would be, and the wetlands cover about half of the parcel. And they proposed the pool about 25 feet from the bordering vegetated wetlands. They did get approval from Conscom at their September meeting for that.
So, is MOA a paper street?
Yeah.
Is that the way paper street?
Yeah. No, it is built out a tiny bit.
Sorry, guys, this, this is not opening for me, I don't know why.
Do you, if you want me to try, I can try sharing my screen.
Yeah, go ahead. It's telling me insufficient data for an image.
What does that even mean?
There it goes, there we go. All right, now maybe I can get it.
Have you got it?
Think so.
I think this was an 81G we did 15 years ago, when we extended Winston Ave all the way to the end with the cul-de-sac.
I think you're right.
Mm-hmm.
So that was the narrative, the plan.
One more screen, one more.
There you go.
There you go.
So existing house, proposed pool. And they have.
It's got the side setback, the 20 feet's okay?
20 feet's okay because it is a sideline, side lot line. The 30 feet is not okay, it needs to be 40 from MOA. And they did receive, their narrative talks about the, the wetlands as a hardship, but.
Wetlands was always there.
Yeah, and they, they came into the commission to ask for the 25 foot setback, so the commission didn't force that upon them, they, they proposed that. So, not, not exactly a hardship if they requested something different of the commission, it's possible that the commission would approve something different for that wet set, that, that wetland.
So what's the setback from the wetland line?
So they're showing 25 feet. There is, there's no, there's no bylaw that establishes a setback for the wetlands, they, the commission likes to see 25 feet for a structure, but it's not, it's not a requirement. So they, they could request something different.
An above ground pool?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes.
Yep.
Not a permanent structure, so. I don't know. I don't have a problem, I don't know about anybody else.
So just to, so you know, this would be a variance for the 30 feet instead of the 40 feet, them having to show the hardship.
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing I would say, which is consistent with what we always say, is to just ask the Board of Appeals to consider asking them to move it closer to the deck, because if they move it closer to the deck, keeping the 25 foot, they're going to maximize their, or they're going to minimize the variance, right? So.
Not from the front yard unless they push it back and they can't because of the 25 feet from the wetland.
Right, but if they move towards the house, you know, parallel to the wetlands and keep 25 feet from that corner of the pool, then the, the distance from MOA, they can maximize that, they could even rotate the pool and do even better. I don't know what the elevation difference between the deck and, I mean, it looks like a lot of steps, but the, the deck and the pool would be, but, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, that, the location just seems kind of arbitrary, so if they're looking for a variance, I'd be asking them to get the smallest variance that they possibly can.
Yeah.
That seems fair to me.
So move closer to the deck to increase the front yard setback.
They could.
Would you, would you advise them to consider a different size pool? It's a 20 by 32 foot.
I'll be honest, I don't even know if that's a normal sized pool or if that's a big pool. How big's 20 feet wide, is that big?
Yeah, it's a thing.
Oh, I have something different in my notes for the size of the pool. And 16 by 24?
Yeah, that's the edge of water of the, so down here on Legend, it says edge of water, but the, the whole structure is the 20 by 32.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that, totally missed that. Okay.
Still pretty big.
Still pretty big, I gotta show the hardship.
It's the size of my living room. Actually bigger than my living room and my living room, too.
So we can ask them, we can advise that they would need to show the hardship and they should look at moving the pool closer to the deck to pull it further away from the street.
Maybe they make the pool adjacent to the house or put, now, get rid of the deck, make the deck part of the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do that.
It's, yeah, it's pretty arbitrary, there's a lot of stuff they could do. I mean, they, it, it looks like what they did was go to the 20, they wanted it as close to that setback, they have a 20 foot side setback, they, they hit that and then put a pool there.
So I assume there's a house on the other side of them where they got, on the other side of the pool?
There is not, but across the street from them, they, yeah, there we go. Across the street, they, there's a, and a better, but next to them is undeveloped.
Okay.
I thought at the end of MOA, there's a house on the other cul-de-sac, can't quite see it with all the trees.
Probably on the other.
Other side.
Other side.
Yeah, possibly.
Yeah, this is all wet back here, if I remember right.
Okay. I, yeah, I thought, looking at the plan, I thought MOA was just a paper street, but if it's developed street, there's another house. They need to meet the setback. What's next?
Next, we have draft decisions for you for 330 Ballerville and 296 Ballerville. They, we drafted the stormwater decision, the site plan review decision, and the special permit for parking. Those were sent out to the applicant team, they didn't have any comments on those, and so those are in front of you for approval. They actually went ahead and worked on the prior to endorsement conditions and revised the plans. So if you don't have any additional prior to endorsement conditions, it would be, it would be ready for you guys to approve the decisions tonight and also vote to endorse the plans once the appeal period is up for the special permit, if you would like to. And I can pull those, I can pull those decisions up if you'd like. Hopefully you have them in front of you.
Yeah, I looked at them, I don't have any questions. Does anybody have any questions about the conditions?
No.
So we'll take a motion to accept the conditions as drafted and move to endorse the plans once the period runs out?
We do that together?
Sure.
So moved.
So I can.
Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. So that takes care of 330 and 296.
Mm-hmm.
More onto new business? More new business, I guess?
Yeah, we have a series of plans for endorsement.
Plans look good?
Yes, Sarah, do you want to give them an overview of the, the plans for endorsement?
Sure, do you, do you want me to say anything about Ballerville, really, it's, it's just the endorsement conditions that are in the draft decision? So, I don't know if I even want to go through those, but.
No, I think they just.
So we have 100.
I think they just voted on those.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was just saying that they, those are the endorsement conditions, they met, the plans are there, they just voted, okay. So, 100, um, so they had kind of a series of edits to make, and clean up things, and making one of the accessible spaces, a van accessible, showing all the proposed dumpsters, revising a note, moving a snow storage area, finer grading at the inlet to the infiltration basin, and revising the stormwater management report, and we reviewed and engineering reviewed, and the plans look like they, they've met all the conditions.
The plans were huge, I can't read them. Stupid.
So you, I'll take a motion to endorse the plans as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
Okay, so 66 Industrial Way also submitted plans. The priority endorsement condition was getting the the proof that the adjacent landowner had been notified via certified mail. We got the letter, the materials they sent to the butter, the receipt and proof of delivery. Also, we were able to add that to the packet today. They had to add a signature block on on one page. And that's that's about it.
Okay, take a motion to endorse plans for 66 Industrial Way.
So moved.
Second.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Did you skip Main Street this?
Sorry, I had my notes in alphabetical order. Sorry about that. 9/11 Main Street. If you guys remember, the the approval was, I think, December 2018. So it's been a little while. So we've gotten the plans for endorsement. They had to change the the address on it. It said 917. They had to update it to 9 9/11. Putting the site plan approval conditions on. They added those to sheet two and showing iron pins installed on the property corners. And the plans look like they've done all that.
Motion to endorse the plans for 9/11 Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Terry? Chairman votes yes.
You also have before you tonight a request to release $54,000 that was collected for the playground at Murray Hill.
Is that enough money?
Yeah, so if you remember back.
I want to catalyze playground.
Well, DPW might have something else to say. So they so the goal was to get something great, but also get something that wasn't going to.
Require a lot of maintenance, I know.
Yeah, yep. And actually, we've already gotten some calls from from folks up there about some weeds in the mulch, so it it'll it'll be interesting to see how this works. And so.
So it's not a playground then now, right?
No, there is a playground. Here, I'm going to show you the picture.
Oh, there is a playground.
There is a playground. So what happened was the decision was written in a way that was a little bit confusing.
That's all we got for a playground? Are you kidding me? No, seriously, that's it? Couple of benches and a little slide?
You wouldn't believe how much these things cost.
I wouldn't believe. Do you know how much those houses are going for? They must, what, 32 houses, Rondi?
Oh, something like that.
Are you kidding me?
So there there was an amount per house that was put into the decision, 50, $1,500 per house.
Whoa, whoa, I allowed that back then? Was I chairman then?
Yes, you were.
You've been chairman as long as I remember.
So.
My hair must have been black back then.
So they came up with a design and with the operations manager, the rec director, the town engineer and myself, we kind of came up with something that was low maintenance, but also provided some play equipment. So they did they did spend the money and what they did was they actually paid for it themselves instead of using the money that they were giving to us and putting into the escrow account. So now we sort of owe that all back to them because they use.
Receipts?
We don't have receipts, but we did work out a budget with them that itemized everything. So we came up with something that we thought was fair and and they kept to that budget.
God. I'm disappointed. Seriously. I'm disappointed.
Well, it's it's always something that we could add to in the future.
Well, yeah, we'll do a better job next time. I'm around. I can't believe that's all we got out of that thing. That was that's ridiculous.
Well, I it is well-used. So there are.
Still ridiculous. Slide and a couple of benches. Geez.
And a stair.
I can't believe that's all we got out of that. I just I know it was before I got time, except for Rondi, but we were the only two on there. This this was not this was geez, I just can't believe it. Anyway, all right, it is what it is.
They'll take a drive up there.
It's beautiful. I've been up there a while, but good though.
So that's it. So the vote would be to release that $54,000 that was collected.
And this was checked by the engineer? Is that what you're saying? You who did what? You said you came up with a list that was checked by Paul or?
Yeah, so it was checked by Paul, by me, by Jamie and by Karen in the rec department. So that was the committee that was established in the decision, actually, of folks to review the the design and we all looked at the budget and there, like I said, it was very purposefully, I think, the the play structure was didn't have a lot of moving parts and pieces that would break and that DPW would have to replace.
Yeah, I understand that. I think at the time, it was quite a big it was quite a big development there. It was two phases to that development. We went through a lot of hassle getting the roadway done, the signs, the sidewalk and the first section of the development. The second section of development came when things peaked. So the idea was to have a nice playground in there to to people that have to travel across town. So that was the whole idea. So I don't remember the 1,500 bucks per house, but obviously I was on the board, so I must have had some say in it, so. Doesn't seem like much. I don't remember Rondi and I voting on the dollars per house. That must have been negotiated after. I'll blame the people on here, so. But it is what it is. All right, so I'll take a motion to release the $54,000.
So moved.
Second.
Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman reluctantly votes yes.
Thank you. And then the only other thing on the agenda, I guess, would be to talk to you about a couple zoning changes that I want to kind of see if there's any interest in for next town meeting, whatever we're doing at that point. The first is something that's come up in the building department, something that's come up with our local land use attorneys. And I think makes pretty good sense would be to take the, you know, the special permits for groundwater protection districts when they're over 15% impervious. They have to go to the ZBA for a special permit. Well, those commercial uses are, I don't, I think every time in front of you guys for site plan review and stormwater. So you're reviewing site site plan and stormwater and then the applicant has to go to the ZBA to get a over 15% impervious special permit, which is all being worked out with the stormwater calculations and the town engineer. So the idea would be to to take the non-residential, so the commercial groundwater special permits for the over 15% impervious and give them to you guys because you're already reviewing those projects anyway. Well, I thought he had a question, but he's leaving. So it's something that I think the the Board of Appeals, I talked to their staff and I talked to the building inspector and they really liked the idea. It's been mentioned to me by some of our local attorneys that, you know, and it's kind of a way to streamline things for applicants when they're already in front of the planning board. They can also get that special permit.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I mean, Paul goes through that pretty thoroughly, so.
Yeah.
So that makes sense.
Okay. The other one is is, I guess, something that's kind of come up here with you guys in the past. You've often said, why don't we have bars? We've talked about restaurants. The Economic Development Committee also feels that way. Why don't we, you know, restaurants are something that we should encourage. We did a survey and residents really do want more restaurants. So right now, general service restaurant is a special permit in the general business zone, pretty much the zone that we would want restaurants in, in our commercial zone. And that special permit criteria, you have to have almost an acre of land. You have to do some really complicated, strangely worded landscaping in the front of your lot. You know, there's a lot of criteria that make it really hard for a restaurant to to come into a new restaurant to come into town. So I guess the general idea, and I don't know exactly how we would do this yet, but the general idea would to have general general service restaurants be allowed as a right in some of our zoning districts, like the general business, instead of having to get a special permit from the ZBA. That's one thing. And then the other thing is kind of related to that was that we've heard the Economic Development Committee has heard a lot about the interest in having brew pubs or sort of micro breweries because people want more than just a restaurant. They want sort of an experience and something interesting. So there's another possibility of adding brew pubs to the restaurant category and allowing those as a right in general business. The zoning bylaw is currently pretty heavy on special permits. There's a lot of special permits required, which is you can have more control, but it's also not doesn't encourage those uses. And we've heard a lot that people want those uses, so. That's sort of the idea. I don't have anything concrete but to put in front of you, but if you think it's something worth pursuing. The other thing that's come up is to approach the selectmen about the the one-drink rule that that you you have to order a meal after. That's actually a Board of Selectmen. If it's a policy or it's a it's a rule that they that they established. So looking at freeing up some opportunities for certain businesses and whether it's, you know, something that you guys want to pursue. I know the Economic Development Committee wants to make recommendations to to town boards about zoning to kind of encourage certain things. But that's so that's something that that I'll be working on in one way or another.
Okay. Are there any other residential areas you want to resolve?
There's one we could do. I think it's a little area called Mozart is the name of the street. I can't remember where it's off of, but it was brought up by a resident there that I actually think they were in looking for a variance for a pool because their lots are are much smaller than, I think they're sort of R10 lots in R20 zone. So it's something we could we could do there. But if you have any thoughts about the restaurant thing, let me know and feel free to give me a call if you want to talk offline. Trying to sort of gather thoughts on whether folks think it would be a good idea to to kind of loosen the controls on that.
Okay. What's going on with the Textron?
So Textron is, they're going to be hiring. They have some new contracts. They're going to be hiring some employees. I think they're going up to about 300 employees in the next couple of years. And they're consolidating their operations into some of the back buildings. And they're going to be doing that over the course of the next couple of years and then hoping to take down some of the build the the aged buildings in the front to to have some new development opportunity. I asked them what they were thinking for new development. They they weren't prepared to talk about that yet, so. So I think they're they're looking at at different options.
So they didn't say they were giving up the land? They were gonna they were going to develop it or?
They didn't say. They didn't say. I I asked them as well, you know, whether they, you know, would put it out for another developer and they they just they they weren't ready to talk about it. So I encourage them to come talk when they when they do have some thoughts and I encourage them that it could be a great extension to the mixed-use district. But, you know, they're going to be thinking about what's compatible with their use in that location. So I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. Anything else?
Not that I can think of.
Senior Center or any of that stuff? Anything moving along on those things?
I believe there was an RFP put out for the senior center, but I I don't know the details of that. We're working on wrapping up our open space plan. It's an update. So that's an ongoing process that will hopefully wrap up by the end of the year. What else?
What about this KP law training?
Oh, so right, so on October, what did I say? 22nd, 20? It's a Thursday. KP Law, so yeah, October 22nd, Jonathan Silverstein is going to put on a training for the boards and commissions, how to hold a flawless public public hearing. So it should be good. Let me know if you can attend and it's going to be on Zoom. I think it should be pretty good. So just let me know.
All right. So I would say no public at a public hearing make it flawless, right?
Then it wouldn't be a public hearing.
Well, of course not, but it's a way to make sure it's flawless, though.
I think he'll be focusing on procedure for the boards.
I don't know. After 20 years, I know no procedures at all.
So that's coming up. Yeah, if you think of any other questions, feel free to to give me a call or shoot me an email.
All right, so we got to endorse these plans. Cheryl, you gonna shoot me out and text message and let me know what to do?
Yeah, I have to set up the room.
And unless we, I don't know if we said it at the last meeting, but we did finally receive word that our vote, your votes for the electronic signature and the plan signing did go through. So Mike, you can endorse these plans for the board.
Look at that. You guys all owe me.
So we can be in touch with you for the ones that you could sign now and then the Ballerville one will have to wait until after the appeal period.
But they have to sign the decisions anyway, so they're all going to be coming in, so.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one sign on one piece of paper and 28 pieces.
All right, so you don't foresee us coming back in the town hall anytime soon, huh?
Not for November. We'll just we're just taking it, I think, you know, each step at a time, little by little. But town hall is going to be, isn't going to be open to the public quite yet. Um, but town hall is going to be, um, isn't going to be open to the public, um, quite yet, so.
And all, all the voting has to go to the Shriner's?
That's right. Yep, all voting is at the Shriner's. Um, early voting is at town hall. I don't remember the dates for that, but that's happening at town hall.
17th, right? Starts?
17th?
Sounds right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, talk to you later.